Start second by Hessin. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? None? We get a motion to approve? Approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion.
Motion by Andrew, second by Mr. Senius. Any questions, comments? So I assume with the tobacco permit for QuickTrip, they're either gonna start selling cigarettes out of the parking lot or be opening before too long?
Be opening here very shortly, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's our office, but.
Perfect.
So with today's ring, is Roger Rouse's roof repair work?
Last good deal? Chief, when you're gonna go burst the bubble over here?
I have no idea. This is the city's department.
No, you said you were the roof maintenance guy. You said you.
Well.
I thought so too.
I turned that over to Senius to get bids apparently.
I do have a couple bids, but that's for the whole roof, I think. And then ones for a repair type thing, and I'm waiting for a third.
Any questions on the consent agenda? All is in favor? All is opposed? Now's the time for receiving filed communications and petition sentences. Man quiet. Anybody?
Comment about the golf cart stuff, but we're gonna get to that later.
Anybody out there, yonder? Moving on. So many reports. Don't think we had any. Hello, Mr. Senior? Moving on. Citizens input. This time council will not take any action on the public comments in this meeting, but may do so at a future meeting. So if you'd like to speak, please limit your presentation to three minutes. Anybody? Moving on. You guys got your bets out?
Yes.
Good deal.
I was thinking I could've just stayed in the truck.
Moving on to all business. Need a motion to approve ordinance spending and revisions pertaining to golf carts. Second reading.
Hessin?
Second.
My start, second by Senius. Discussion. This was to bring everything in alignment, right Chief?
Yes, sir. I had someone call me today and ask about why we're, I guess going in this direction of not allowing golf carts on Third, rather than not allow, or rather than allowing UTVs on Third.
It's not either.
Neither one are allowed.
Neither one.
Well, but right now golf carts are allowed, right?
No.
They're not allowed on Third.
No. It's just wording is, I believe it's the camp beyond the extension of Main Thoroughfare. Iowa 150 would be the main thoroughfare. Anything extending beyond that to 218 or to the east would be an extension. We just wanna clear up that wording, but so they're identical for the UTVs and the golf carts. I think I had the same person contact me today. I explained to her the reason why they can't be on the third street. That started very throughout the hospital now, most of the. She did have a fair argument saying that, well, how come the, you know, the golf carts, they can pull off to the side like a regular vehicle? Well, golf carts aren't the same as a car, obviously, and usually when the ambulance are, you know, traveling that road, it's usually not at the 25 mile an hour speed limit. So if something was to happen, I don't think a golf cart would survive a crash versus an ambulance.
Sure. Okay.
Plus it's parking on one side as well.
Yep. I had mentioned that.
So no UTV on Third?
No UTVs on Third from K or 218 and I found. Pretty much takes most of that.
Why?
Now, you guys, that's totally up to you guys. You guys make the ordinances, so if you wanna change it.
I just thought UTV was from just the 150 route.
You know, originally though, when we did discuss that, it was just the new part of Third Street. If I remember right, and you do have to think about when you're trying to get from, you know, point A to point B without.
But I don't think we've been sticklers as law enforcement.
Well, I think the main bar was at New Stratford, Third Street.
Sure.
Originally. And the board barred it off for it.
But if you guys wanted to change that, that's up to you guys.
I said we just opened it up.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make both those align together for the areas of operation.
On the similar subject, but not this. The flag requirements are, what is the flag requirement?
For the golf carts only.
Yeah.
That's five feet.
Five foot.
Yeah. From the ground, and they have to have the slow-moving vehicle sign, triangle. UTVs do not have to do that.
Very good. UTVs need to be inspected though?
Yes.
Have you seen many people getting pulled over and?
Personally, I have not pulled them over, but like, like I said, we're not, we're not going out and hammering people, but they're, they're in the area they shouldn't be, we'll have a conversation with them. Personally myself, I probably had five. And that's UTVs and, and golf carts.
The thing that I see probably more than anything is kids all over the golf carts. I followed someone just today that had a mom and five kids on golf carts and.
Well, when, when they're getting, did you know, did they have a sticker on the back?
I knew who it was. I didn't look for a sticker.
Wow. It was a call.
Sure.
We can go have a conversation with them if you know who they are.
Sure.
But when they do register their golf carts or UTVs, they get a copy of the ordinance. The clerks up front are very good about making sure that they get a copy.
Yeah.
And the state's right on the registration or the application, the areas of operation and what they can't do and can't do. But if you guys want to change something, that's totally up to you guys. You just, I just enforce it.
Well, like I said, the concern, I keep kind of clarified a little bit too. She wanted, she was just confused as to why it was. I think the point that she made to me was that the only way to go east and west then is on, essentially on Third or Fourth. You have First Street, and that's a busier, she argued it was a busier street than Third, and like I said, she just thought that Third.
And if you can cut over to First.
Sure.
Okay. Hundred dollar street. Any other questions, comments? Roll call please.
Senius?
Yep.
Har?
Yep.
Hessin?
Yeah.
Starb? Yes. Edward?
Yep.
Elway?
Yes. Any motion to approve resolution to amend the traffic control devices? Second. Motion by Starb, second by Ellen. Mr. Ward, what do we got? Is this you or is this another chief? Oh, this was the committee thing out at the new development.
Yes, no parking site.
This was from Scott Meyer.
Oh, Scott just brought this home. So this was after the meeting and the discussion out there, this is what y'all came up with?
Yes. I believe so. I wasn't there, but I believe that's what it is.
Was this our meeting or was this?
This was our meeting.
Is this what y'all agreed to?
I didn't agree to Ted.
Yeah, I wasn't there. I had a.
Yeah, okay. I went out there last night and.
I thought we already told us.
No, we used to report at the committee.
Yeah, you were reporting at the committee meeting, what you were gonna suggest.
And this is besides that we're with the fire hydrants who didn't want parking on the side.
Get to this Ted?
Yep.
Okay.
Should be. It was his idea to begin with.
And any other questions? Roll call.
Elway?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Senius?
Yep.
Starb? Yes. Edward?
Yep.
Hessin?
Yeah. Alrighty, I mean, the motion approved Shive had recommendation for Trail Project bid. Matt? Speak on, I need a motion. First by Hessin, second by Senius. Matt, you wanna?
I mean, I, summation, this has been over two years of us meeting, planning, designing, everything with Shive. Took the bid letting on Tuesday, 11 bids, so I think we're, I mean, we're all, Chris, what, I mean, they sent that email over with all the 11 bids, I think they were within 200,000.
Yeah, they were pretty close. Pretty tight.
With regards to all the addendums too, not just the base bid, but the addendum one, which was the field fence, and the addendum two, which was the cost per square foot to lay the glow rock. And so I, Chris, we talked about the apparent though bidder, some of their work. They meet with Shive, they've done a lot of work on the western part of the state, big projects, so I'm pleased with where we're at with regards to the price on the base bid and on the addendums and, you know, they can get started, provided approval tonight, I mean, they can get started as early as July 28th, depending on when we can release funds and things like that, so. The end date of the project is spring of 2021, so I think I tell like June 1 of 2021 to get the project done, but I'm just happy, I mean, again, before, obviously, I have any votes or anything like that, I mean, I appreciate council something about, and then this, this trail in general, this is gonna be a, I think this is gonna be a great amenity for our community, not think, I know it'll be a great amenity for the community, but I also think it'll be a great tourist attraction too, to bring people into town, and we, we're talking about, you know, what we'll have to offer with this thing, it'll be a very unique feature, so.
Explain the glow stone a little bit more. Is that, you had a couple of pictures at one point that, one was a sample thing that you guys did that you could see glow, but it wasn't, didn't pop out at you, then there's the companies which I.
Right.
Assume they fill it with the glow dust so that it really stands out. Are you looking, thinking somewhere in the middle or?
Well, so what we ended up having with regards to the samples, we had two pounds of varying sized samples, so we had anything from, had, we even had a half inch in there bud? I don't think we did.
No, we had the quarter inch.
Really small or stuff. We had anything from quarter inch to little flecks with regards to our samples, and we had roughly two pounds in that sample, and that sample for two pounds should only cover a four by four square foot area, and we did a seven by 11 foot square foot area, so we did way more than what we should have. If we would've done just the small little area that was required by the manufacturer's specs, that thing would've lit up like a Christmas tree.
We should've had 12 pounds in that sample.
We should've had 12.
Instead of the two.
We should've had 12 pounds. So what I think we're looking at, what we've talked about with Shive and with the gentleman at AGT, is a quarter, quarter inch sized rock, and it will, he's giving it to us for 50% cost of what it would typically cost us per pound. So instead of $44 a pound, we're looking at $22 a pound. So, and that quarter inch rock will, it shines. It's pretty awesome.
What's the lifespan of it?
20 years. 20 year, and it's a 20 year warranty. So, I mean, if they, if it doesn't work after 10 years, then go back and tell them we need more. And then if after 20 years, if this is any of our problems, if all, all any of us are else appear after 20 years, we just asphalt it, throw more in, and we're good to go. This will be though, and we've worked, talked with Shive about, we can't, this will be the largest glow trail in the entire country. So we're modeling this out, something that we found in, in the Netherlands and in Poland. So it'd be pretty awesome. It's got no light to compete with, it takes 10 minutes of solar power, and it glows for up to 15 hours. So it'll be pretty awesome.
Oh, it's cool. I'm excited.
The application process itself is extremely easy. You just float it in, and then you put a, you put a retardant on it, and you come back and spray it off, or the, I mean, the application process is up to the contractor, we've kind of left that up to them, if they wanna go that route, or if they just wanna come back the next day and kind of power wash off the, the top layer, but.
So I'd like to request, though, that once they do that sample chunk, that we should all go out there and look at it, see if it's overall acceptable with it.
Yeah.
You, you just take a look at it, 'cause we're all like, eh, then they might wanna try it again, so.
At night?
Well, you wanna see it during the day to see what the finish looks like, and then at night, well, that's the outcome, it's still.
When 5:00 AM, work ethic or?
Yeah. Four? So, any other questions? Roll call.
Senius?
Yep.
Hessin?
Yeah.
Har?
Yeah.
Edward?
Yep.
Elway?
Yes.
Starb? Yes.
Good deal. Alright, now I need a motion to approve change order for GeoGrid on the south side of Splash Pad.
This one, you guys. What was that?
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion by Starb?
Target.
Second by Senius. Okay.
This one will have to table till the 23rd, meeting on 23rd, the pay application didn't get submitted in time, so I had it on the agenda in anticipation of the pay application from our contractor, but it didn't go through the engineer. So more or less what happened was there's a soft spot on the north side of the Splash Pad, and they had to put in roughly $10,000 worth of GeoGrid, and so that's what the change order is for.
I think they had to dig down a couple feet.
We had to dig downs, yeah.
Awesome.
We're gonna have to arrange for GeoGrid, yeah.
Alright, so we've told you to approve this change order, alright?
Can we do it without the pay application?
Yeah, it's a separate item, isn't it?
Yes, you can approve change order and do the pay application at different time. Yeah, you can do that.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
It's roughly $9,950. Not roughly, it is $9,950.
Roll call.
Hessin?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Starb? Yes. Elway?
Yes.
Senius?
Yep.
Edward?
Yep.
Alright, now I need a motion to discuss airport mower and tractor.
Motion.
By Ellen, send my start. Chris?
Leon is here for the airport commission, but, yeah, you want me to go ahead and start about it, Leon?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, from my understanding, we got the new John Deere tractor, if you remember, last year, and at the time, the issue was not, it was one, the size of the tractor. Also, it was the funding for it, because it was a 90%, 10% match fund for the tractor, and that 10%, we didn't really have the funds for, so at the time, we did discuss, we did discuss that with the sale of the other two older tractors, we would utilize those funds to cover the city's 10% at the top. Come find out, I believe that the tr, the mower for the old tractors do not fit onto the new tractor, is that correct? Yeah. And because of that, the airport commission is looking, wanting to purchase a new mower on the John Deere tractor. Another issue is the whole, the purchase of the tractor was for snow removal equipment. That's what it was, that's why it was purchased, that's what it says under the grant requirements, even though they, the FAA wants us to exercise the equipment year round, at least once a month, but it is specifically listed as snow removal equipment, and I found for eligible projects under the federal AIP, it does say snow removal equipment ineligible was maintenance equipment in vehicles, parentheses, mowers. So that, that becomes the issue, is I believe the funding for, for this, for a particular new mower right now.
What was our 10% part, the cost of that?
It was about 30 something thousand.
I think it was.
Was that without the engineering?
I think it was 40 plus, 'cause it, we essentially took care of.
Over 400,000.
We took care of the engineering.
Oh.
We, we, our 10% was essentially the same as the engineering costs, and we were blown away that we were paying a guy $40,000 to make sure that the one tractor they could give us would meet whatever stipulations.
Of the buy American?
The, the federal government has, and it's frustrating to me to now come back and hear that the $40,000 that we paid for an engineer's estimate, or for an engineer to go over everything, didn't catch the fact that the attachments we need for this tractor aren't gonna work.
And we can't even do it anyway.
Yeah, we couldn't do it.
Yeah, it's not that the tasks we have, but they just can't put a mower on it.
Well, would we have not have bought a mower with it at the time? That would work?
The grant language would have been changed, am I mistaken if that was the case? That is correct. You're not mistaken, and it wasn't just any grant language. It's the grant language not from the state of Iowa, it's from DC that made this grant, right, not, not anybody local.
I, I understand. I just, I guess I'm frustrated with our engineering firm, and maybe that's not their job, to put those pieces together, but.
So basically, the cheapest route for us to go is to keep the two tractors and the lawn mower you got, and we come up with the 10%.
Yes, but there's other issues that I've become, I just found out as far as funding, and Leon, is the flying from, from Oshkosh, that's been canceled?
Yes. Not every other flying has been too.
And because it's.
So that kinda hurts our fuel revenues.
That's where we make about, what is it, 80%?
But that brings up another issue, this fuel thing, it's, it's really, it doesn't make any sense to any of us, I know the ones I've talked to, that we're keeping that fuel cost down to attract traffic here. I mean, if the airport can make more money on fuel and hangar, I mean, this whole thing is just a deficit, and it's not, doesn't have any too good a future, no good outlook. So we can't just keep pouring money into this thing if it isn't gonna make anything.
Well.
And the idea of keeping the fuel cost down doesn't even make sense. That's not even a good business strategy.
Well, there's, there's a little bit more to it as far as the traffic is concerned, because our ranking in the state is right dead in the middle, right?
Or what?
Our ranking in the state as far as traffic in and out is right in the middle, for all the airports in the state. So you do want the traffic up, that gives you justification to get FAA grant funding here for AIP projects and those type of things, but at the same time, it requires us as a city to spend the 10% it takes to match. Most grants that I do are not a 90/10 match. At one point, airports used to be 95/5%, now it's down to 90/10, state matches is 80/20. I'm lucky on other projects that we're doing to find 50/50, or 55%, like USDA rural development, and we gotta cough up 45% of the other costs, which is what we're looking at at the wastewater treatment plan, right bud?
So my understanding though, when we went and got this grant, that the old equipment would be auctioned off and used to pay part of our 10%?
Yes.
So that's not going to do that now, or?
Well, I don't know how much, the thing is, how much is the mower estimated at, Leon?
Say again, please?
The cost of the mower?
I know, my last figure I heard was $18,000.
The cost, the, what more, the one they're looking to buy, or?
Last council meeting was 17, 18,000, yeah.
We do get a lot of attendant traffic, even if Oshkosh is down. I just saw a turbine airplane in there today, as a matter of fact, and they come in here, the benefit to that is we keep fresh fuel in here, and we do make a little profit on it, and we need that for our agricultural operations, which are gonna start in a couple of days, those are all turbine airplanes now, which helps the local area and the economy.
How many, how many do you have coming, agriculture planes you have coming in our area of this?
I don't know exactly how many airplanes, but we serviced something like 70,000 acres around here in the last year.
Noe does that on their own, right?
No.
Oh, they don't?
Noe doesn't do it on his own. We had two other operators.
Oh, I. But those operators are from other areas that need fuel up here?
Well, one guy came from Bell Plain, and then we have Wason, who operates out of here as well, and Noe, and then occasionally, we get other people from Illinois, and we've seen them from Mississippi that are coming up here to service some of it, so. But, but in my mind, it's like the taxpayers are footing the bill for somebody's business, and that doesn't happen in any other situation. I mean, where else does that happen? Trucking industry? How? How does the taxpayer supplement other businesses?
By the highway.
Somehow or another, the airport has to generate more money, if we're gonna keep dumping more money into it, and I've always been a, I've always been a fan of the airport, but we can't just keep, you know, explaining this to all the public, you know, heads for the better. How is it for the better? You know, it's their money. We can't just.
And then what's coming up?
What's gonna be next, and after that, and after that.
Well, if you read their minutes, they have a lot of projects on the horizon.
What's that?
As if you read their minutes from their meetings, because they do have a lot of projects on the horizon. For the most part, the majority of their projects are funded from their own budget, so that those funds aren't coming out of, always coming out of the general budget. This time, it looks like we got a little bit behind the eight ball.
Well, duck pond, what budget's that coming out of?
That's gonna be, that's feral, that, that's also feral as well for that safety.
Right, which we got down to 50,000, right?
Right.
But how much of that do we pay personally?
No.
10%?
Yes, it will be 10% of that, but then.
Plus the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
The, not the engineering, but whatever was that was, that cost the two other fees that were on there.
Right, that, that was, that was engineering land.
Just for coordination of engineering with something.
What, and we're just talking here, I myself don't know about the end of the pond. The end of the pond is, the pond gets filled in?
Yes.
Do we have a cost on filling the pond in?
About, it's gonna be, and the estimate on the AIP on their long range term is around 100,000 on that.
Where are the turtles going? They're being relocated?
To the courts.
If we can find, there's no way there.
There's no way there. Is that?
You are.
Is that really the plan?
Yes. Yeah, that's the plan.
Back in their banks, they're over the court.
Guess when the FAA said we had to give a ribbon. We had to go find one.
You have to replace it with extra additional green.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm not a turtle guy, but I have talked to some, you know, turtle people lately, and they're like, no, you don't just relocate turtles though.
It's not relocation of, well, you can try, but it's a replacement of open green space.
Yeah, yeah.
Additional.
But I'm just saying, I think they keep, I would touch on relocating physical turtles.
Relocating a turtle pond. We didn't say we're gonna trap the turtles.
Okay, that makes me feel better, to be honest.
We're not turtle trapping.
Okay.
No, we're not turtle trapping. No, 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 no.
Okay, I, that's why I wanted to get that out.
Sorry, so we're getting off of the mower and tractor subject here, so let's get back on it. So I guess the recommendation is that we can't do a mower, because we can't use the new tractor to mow law?
No.
No, you really cannot, you're not supposed-
Who's gonna check it? If we hadn't talked about it, I think it'd be fine, if it got brought up, so. But really, who's gonna check it? That was the first thing I was-
Go up there and-
But they want, but they want the, they want the tractor exercised monthly. But it's gonna be strictly for snow removal.
It specifically says not for mowing law.
Yeah, but it says that eligible projects-
And you're risking this grants and-
It says that.
And future grants, that we do this.
Yep, nobody's gonna say they're gonna come out and check, but what if they do?
So I don't see how we can do that.
I can try to think of other ways, which is the Air Force Commission, and come up with other options to bring back to counsel.
That would probably be a great idea. Because if we do have to get a different mower, and a different tractor, so that mower, and we're supposed to use the money from the old stuff to offset our ten percent, y'all are into the city for a little bit more. Pay the loss of our revenue for the sale of the tractors, plus the new ten percent that we gotta come up with, so.
What, what would it cost to hire someone to go out and mow the, well, maybe that would be an option?
Not a very good one.
What?
Not a very good one.
So the mower that they have, the mower you have now is defunct completely?
Well, not really big enough, we've got several acres, we have to keep the grass down to keep deer from nesting there near the runway. We had a deer hit an airplane here a couple of years ago, cause they're close to the runway, so we have to keep that grass away from the runway and mow down pretty low, so you'd be mowing it every week or two.
It's worth them discussing at some point.
But is the mower adequate for the year?
Pardon?
Is the mower still adequate, what we have? Well, part of he's out there on a, one of these riding lawnmowers, like you mow your yard with, he's do, he's doing that for several acres. That's, we have to pay him a lot more money to do that, because he's gonna a lot more time, nowhere to make up the difference or not, I don't know. But about the time he gets through mowing one end of it, he has to start at the other end, so.
So about, uh, we just spit fire, um, letting somebody come in and plant alfalfa and let them mow it and bail it.
Well, deer love alfalfa.
I was just gonna say. That might counterproductive, trying to do it.
I like the out of the box thing.
Well, that's good, thank you.
Well, I mean, nothing on alfalfa, but it would be another crop that would-
Well, part of the, part of the airstrip already, they do bail, in fact, Brian just bailed again. Yeah, we rent, uh, individual, that's about twelve thousand dollars a year rent we get from him, but still, around the airstrips, there's a lot to mow. And-
And we're not gonna figure this all out tonight, I realize.
No, Chris offered to go back to him and get some other options to bring back, so I think we ought to let him do that.
Well, but for the bigger picture, I, you know, at some point, we gotta talk about this, we're eventually gonna fence around it, is what, we all kinda agree that eventually it's gonna get there.
The street department did go out.
What?
Early fence around the entire-
They filled in a lot of the scratch.
Yeah, I heard that.
Talked about.
Assume that's gonna happen at some point.
Well, before moving the duck pond, that was discussed, putting a fence in, it was cost prohibitive. And now we're in a good deal of money to this duck pond, we don't start looking at fence now.
Well, not now, but you think at some point, so, okay, nice.
Hopefully, it's not in our generation. I mean, all airports, let's face it, are built out in rural areas. I mean, we're-
I was just saying, till the city grows around.
When you start an airport that are out in rural areas, and if it gets built up around it, it'll still be a bit, when they start off, they, they are in the rural areas, whatever. But anyway, so, so all the airports have this little problem, I mean, we've had that problem, it's been a deer haven since day one.
I couldn't shoot it fast enough during season, I'm sorry, that's right on, so.
We need to hunt more out of season, but anyways, so. We're never gonna solve that deer.
No.
Never, it's never gonna be solved. But we can alleviate part of it, at least, which may save a life or two.
You're talking about the fence, right? The fence?
Mowing.
Oh, mowing, just mowing, okay.
All right, well, I say we let Chris get back with the commission, and when's your next meeting, Leon?
Uh, third Wednesday of the month, next Wednesday. Quicksand.
Anytime?
We border the airstrip with quicksand. Say again? Quicksand, we border the airstrip with quicksand.
No.
I thought you were a genius.
No.
That's a little drastic, but we'll work on it.
Oh, no.
Sands are already there, we don't have to use that water.
No, yes, occasionally, you have a plane go off that runway.
I still say-
Three years is on the fifteenth.
You gotta reason, price or something, huh?
Yeah, on the fifteenth, this man.
Next one, Jason? So we have something on the twenty-third, are meeting on the twenty-third?
Any other discussion on the mower and tractor? Okay, moving on, now it's time to set a public hearing on the plans of spec for the street project for July twenty-third. Taking a motion.
So move.
Mr. Hesse?
Bigger.
Second, my senior? Nate? Would you like to speak upon what you have designed?
I really just came in case there were any questions, because I can leave you guys hanging, so.
It's done yet?
It is not done yet.
Where do they start?
Uh, well, we need to bid at first, and that's gonna be a week from tomorrow, on the seventeenth, eleven AM right here. So we'll find out what you have to deal with at that point, and-
How many plan holders?
I was gonna leave that before I came, and I-
You said if I had any questions?
That's a good question, and I kinda, I can look it up online right now, but so can you. Uh, we have had very good interest in it, um, had a few phone calls on it, um, everybody seems very happy to see the schedule that we have put together, which is a late start date of September one. That isn't to, obviously encourage them to get started before winter this year and get at least a few blocks completed. We do have a September thirtieth kind of deadline to get those to a point where the city staff can come in and do the seal code on the avenues, so that would be Third Avenue through Seventh Avenue between Eighth and Ninth Street. If you remember those from a few years ago, that'd be designed, and we'll put them on the shelf. And, and I was directed to just include all five of those blocks into this project. So, um, only one of those has any utility work underneath it, uh, it's, I believe, Third Avenue has, uh, some sewer main to replace, the other ones is just grading and street. So hopefully, they'll, uh, they'll have some crews free up to come in and get some of those things done. The other streets, Tenth and Eleventh, um, Tenth Street has water main, Eleventh is not, or vice versa, I'll look it up, I guess. So that's another one where that would be a remove of the existing pavement and regrade it, and put back in. Just refresh your memories, we are doing asphalt on Sixth, Ninth, Tenth, and Eleventh, but of course, we're doing the seal code on the avenues.
So these bids out there for the whole entire project, they're bidding out?
Yes, one, one big project is a pretty good set of plans.
Not breaking it down.
But they can do it in chunks as they-
Yes.
As long as it's completed by-
Yeah, so, uh, should finish the completion date, so we, we do have a winter shutdown included in the specifications, and then they would start again in the spring to finish everything out, and it has to be done by October first of next year, completely done, all the streets have to be done, seeded, everything by then.
Very favorable windows to get it done.
That's the report from every contractor that I've talked to about the schedule, they are very pleased with the schedule that we have put together, which generally leads to good bids, so I'm optimistic.
So we're not doing any other projects next year?
That's probably, sixth, for sure, will be next year.
And with the amount of sewer that's on Ninth, I would expect Allen to get pushed as well.
So you'll be staying on?
The other seven blocks, if anything's on the table. I wouldn't expect to see all seven of those blocks done this fall, but I'd like to see anything for them.
Do you like to add anything?
Yeah.
Chris, if we-
Depends where the bids come in.
Well, that's kind of my question, if we end up getting favorable bids, we bond it for four million dollars.
Yes, is your answer.
Max bid went-
Yes, that's your answer.
Went down, so we got the money for-
Yes, is your answer.
We could look for other areas.
How come we can't take some of this money when we need it like out of landfill, that seems to be an abundance to me?
For the land, for the-
Oh, the landfill.
Mm-mm, no, 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 because of the way that your accounting system is set up, and, and also the laws of the state of Iowa, you don't, you don't shift it around for that purpose.
So if we have, it looks to me like an abundance, does that mean we're overcharging?
No, no, you wanna have ample reserves for just in case anything happens.
It seems like it's building up pretty fast.
No, you just, you have to loan yourself.
I don't know that Allen.
Hudson doesn't think that's gonna happen.
I was tripping my tongue, I don't, Eric, this is it.
So we can't ever borrow from that?
You have six hundred dollars in balances.
You just did.
Did I?
You did borrow from the landfill.
All right, we're on streets here.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, you did, for your down payment assistance.
What are you supposed to, average cost to fill in a pothole is?
I'll have to ask Scott.
You got one pothole?
I'm sure he knows.
Just an average cost, what are you supposed to cost the city to fill a pothole?
Four hundred dollars.
And we should have borrowed for another million bucks. I've had more complaints the last couple of weeks about potholes in town, and I explained it's the heat part of it, but, uh, there's some pretty nasty holes in our streets.
Well, then you should be contacting Chris, you would contact Mr. Meyer to have him go out and fix that.
I figured this would be a good time to tell us all.
I think those guys are chasing their tails up there too, cause they're out, you know.
You're out there seal coding right now.
Yeah.
You've got those complaints, that's where you got Chris and those guys for, so. All right.
Nobody else is hearing about that, though?
I bet you could.
Let's see how he's coming.
We have, they're on our list.
Yes, we have, we have quite an extensive list, so.
Any other questions for Nate on these? So, that public hearing is set for July twenty-third, seven PM.
Stand a motion of second.
Yep. Roll call.
Start. Yes, start.
Yep.
The senior?
Yep.
Hesse?
Yes.
Elway?
Yes.
Edwards?
All righty, moving on to new business.
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks, Nate. You keep motioning for a request for land use change for the Alex Brothers LLC. First my start, second by senior, discussion.
Good for them.
It's outside the city limits, so it's not a typical, um, request for like zoning change, but it's out, because it's out of the county, it's within our two mile zone, two mile area, um, it does require review by the City House.
I think it's awesome.
I think Mayor Graham was an engineer. I think Mayor Graham was your engineer for the second phase. Yeah, I know.
Everybody familiar with that is?
Yep.
Basically, if we do this, we're just releasing them from having to follow city codes, right?
Right, and, but they're not inside the city limits.
But they're within two miles, and technically, they have to do that.
But beans are not a hog confinement, that's okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
All right.
Yep.
Hesse?
Yes.
The senior?
Yep.
Start, yes, Edward?
Yep.
Elway?
Yes.
All good? All right, now I need a motion approval question from the Vinton Lions Club for food trailer at the farmer's market.
Motion.
Second.
First my start, second by Hesse.
You're up.
Dennis?
Dennis, you're up here for something else?
No, I'm here for the, uh, Vinton Lions Club, I believe you had a little sketch in your pack.
We do.
And, uh, we've been working with the Vinton Parks and Rec to start participating on a weekly basis to have the farmer's market, and we'll be, the, the plan is to put our, our, uh, food trailer in the location shown on the sketch, and our request, though, is to leave it there, in that location, during the duration of the farmer's market. And that's because our food trailer is not like a food truck that is self-contained and can be moved very easily, so we wanna leave it there, button it up, and, um, we will move it probably twice during the summer to other events, like party in the park and boom fast, but we want, we would like to store it there rather than go through the process of moving that food.
Matt?
Yeah.
Right in front of your apartment.
Um, I don't know if it's on in the front, it's on the- What side?
It's, it's on A Avenue.
What side?
It's on A Avenue, it's, it's where the, right at this point-
The dead end's the river.
Yeah, right, it's, it's basically that dead end street, and right now, that's where the, right now, there's a food truck that is participating, and we, we would be located next to that food truck, and there's a power pole there that supports pluggings.
I don't personally have a problem with it, um, I know that Ted and I have talked about it, I, I think that, you know, Ted's, I mean, Ted's talked to Dennis about it as well, I think the, the issue more or less lies with whether or not the neighbors in that area are gonna have any sort of concern with regards to that, I mean, the park's fairly well-led, so I'm not concerned, I don't have concerns about vandalism, although I will say that we have had issues with some people in that restroom area in the past, but I think Ted's, Ted's folks have done a really good job of cleaning that up, we've not had those same issues this summer, so, having said all that, I, I don't have a problem with it, but again, it goes to the, to the neighbors there, so.
And we're aware of the past concerns about vandalism there. Now, the normal location is kitty corner to the park where we store it, and we've never had any issues with it there.
Is there a chance of pulling that up the grass?
That could be done. That, that could be done. There was another alternative, I think, Matt brought up, for, uh, parking in the alley.
A little.
I think you want to sell it, you have to plug it in.
But then they still have to move it.
Yeah, we don't, well, we could run longer extension cords, they could, they, you guys have to run longer extension cords.
But it, you're setting up one.
Well, we're, we're gonna get, we're working with, uh, those guys to do two twenty outlets, so.
Catch a pole right up there by the pole on the grass, by the sidewalk?
Oh, we could do that.
We could do that, too, yes.
Then, then you don't have to worry about me getting all worked up.
The end goal is to have, then your park all around that certain area, so.
Do you, you're plugged in, I mean, do you need the power during the week?
Only when it's being used.
I mean-
Only when we're being, when, only when we're just in there. Oh, there is a freezer in there with a little pot up there.
Last one, I was wondering, if it will be plugged in all the time, I'm just, I'm wondering, saying you're gonna run into problems with kids messing around with cords, with, and you can't have the cord laying across the sidewalk, if you're gonna park it on one side of the sidewalk. Different issues with the power, you know?
What if, um, what if everybody just makes a broad, um, motion to allow it to stay- what if everybody just makes a broad, um, motion to allow them to stay at the park throughout the week? And then we get together and work with, um, electric to either do a drop box there or do something separate that might work for that location that's off the road but still in the park, in the grass. I mean, I don't have, again, I don't have a massive issue if it's on that side area, like we're talking about that kind of alleyway if you pull in. I don't have a major problem with that either, um. It just, whatever we can do to make it work for them. We're trying to promote many vendors out there to begin. Well, that's what we'd have to talk about too, yeah, because if they're gonna meter it to us, we'd have to figure out how to run that specific meter, and if we get that bill, we'd have to pass that bill on to... And maybe that's too many moving parts. Maybe that's too many moving parts.
We also, actually, the, during the farmer's market, we're gonna be very limited to actually what we can sell. That's based on their requirements. So we do want, as I mentioned in the write-up, we do want to also utilize it occasionally, open it up other times. So, you know, there's lots of activity up at Celebration Park at noon times and so forth. So we're planning to occasionally open it, advertise specifically for it, and open it up for, you know, Tenderloin Tuesday, uh, for, you know, a couple of times, or maybe at lunchtime, because that park is filled now. And in those cases, we would have, be able to make some money, because we can provide our full menu. And we're very limited, actually, in the farmer's market, because of how they're set up.
That's because of the state requirement of how farmer markets are working, so not necessarily us, but the state's hand company.
So again, we're really looking for a way to, with our fundraising being limited this year in particular, we kind of wanted to make that step and get a situation to have the park support the farmer's market that wants to get expanded. Even though we're gonna be very limited what we can sell during those events, but we're willing to do it for the purpose of the, of the whole farmer's market, and then have a couple other opportunities when we can use our full menu to try to make up for some of the lost revenue that we normally generate. Since the trailer really is the lion's, basically, our only fundraising vehicle, yeah.
So that's fine with me, I just, you know, if it's possible to put it up off the curb, that'd be great.
I don't think there's any issue with that, because that's, we can locate it right by that power pole, and-
That's perfect.
I, I guess we kind of thought there would be some issues with, of course, cutting stuff. It's very similar to like when we're in the park, in Riverside Park. I mean, we're on the grass, and, yeah. Now, would you, would you move that if they had to move?
It might kill a patch of grass, but I mean, you're not gonna see it anyways. Right, and you're not gonna see it anyways because the trailer's on top of it, it's no big deal. I mean, I don't, I mean, boys might have to be around it a little bit and stuff like that, but I-
And then we'll be a couple occasions.
Not the end of the world.
Right, so that would be an opportunity to, to come back and improve it a little bit.
Okay. So I guess we got a motion on the table, allowing the parker down at the trailer park, you guys have worked out fine details about the electric and everything else, so. Any other questions? Roll call.
Elway?
Yes.
Star?
Yep.
Star? Yes. Hessenius?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yes.
Hesse?
Yes.
Alright, now we need a motion approval disposal of the water department dump truck.
Did you skip the one?
I did? No, I didn't.
Oh, sorry. I did, I was going to hand it around, sorry.
So, motion approved disposal of the water department dump truck.
Sure.
Motion by Hesse, second by Hessenius. Anybody want to get rid of the dump truck?
Oh, what's wrong with dump trucks?
Just Craig, don't you usually take these?
What's that?
He's still here.
Don't you take it out to the sanitary place?
We took one from the street department.
What is the dump truck?
It is the F eight thousand, that white truck that we drive, tandem axle.
Does it dump, that?
It's got dump block, yeah.
Four-wheel drive?
Four-wheel drive?
Yeah. It's a class D, class C.
Uh, it's got air brakes, it'll be class B.
The Evergreen Cemetery is looking for a dump truck. But they want four-wheel drive?
They want smaller. Four-wheel truck.
Bring them bigger. They want a small one?
Yep. How you end dispose of it? That's what I'm asking you, how you want me to. I was approached by Dale Huzenga from Central Cable, and he was interested in it. And I've been talking to, uh, somebody from truck country, and he thought he might have some people interested in buying it, so I figured I better ask you guys how I should go about.
Seal bids?
Gov deals.
Gov deals?
When was the last thing we sold on gov deals?
Was that, has it been working?
Oh, yeah.
We actually don't own much left of it, Ted sold it all.
Well, can I? I'd really like to have a bigger dump truck. And we have a small.
Okay.
Now we're in negotiations.
Which one?
I want both. I gave you, you got a mower and a, and a cut bed out there, so. We just gave you a glowing trail.
If this thing can be utilized by another city department, I'd like to see that addressed first, and then whatever you need.
I mean, is it in decent shape? I mean, I have, our guys have to get class B, but I mean, they're gonna get rid of it.
I'd give it a warranty out of it.
What was that?
Is the small one you have four-wheel drive?
I don't think it is.
Alright.
They want four- Yeah.
If it-
Yeah.
Are your employees gonna actually class Bs with me?
No, they don't.
So you have to do that, if you want them to go drive.
Right, right, and that's been our issue in the past too, so like, we've always had to go down and have smurf from one of the other guys.
There's a one-day class of an ancestor, you go test and they'll go get you down, so.
I don't want to, I, I, I don't want to ruin, you know, step on.
I just don't want to get rid of something if it can be better utilized by somebody else in our-
No, I get it, I just-
But if it's got issues, you're passing the issues on to the others, it'd be better to get rid of it.
That's kind of where I'm at, yeah.
Out of town, rather than-
I can search gov deals and see if I can find something else too, so that's fine, so that's-
You end up buying it off there, then there's a problem.
You're right. Touche.
So, the motion is for Craig to dispose of the dump truck. We don't care how you dispose of it, if it goes to another department or-
Okay.
Goes on the gov down deals, that would be your choice, and I'd make sure you ask everybody first, but that's not very many people to ask, so.
I'll go with Chris, make sure I'm doing it right. We'll get her done. Still gotta find one yet, so. I want to get rid of the two soon.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Star?
Go.
Star? Yes. Hesse?
Yeah.
Hessenius?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yep.
Elway?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to item B. Need a motion approval permit for supervised display of fireworks.
Sure.
Yep. So move.
First by Hesse, second by Star.
I did all three.
What is up?
Chuck, yeah, but so this is for their members' home, like it's not really a public event.
Oh!
It is going to be-
So we can't open our eyes?
Take it back!
I mean, you know, they're not, it's not-
It's not gonna kick you out if you don't.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah. It's at the fairgrounds?
Yes.
Oh, I'm close enough anyway.
Yeah.
You can come over later.
So, you use it like, everybody? So what's going on?
It's their own meeting, and they might, may or may not, you know, shoot off fireworks.
That's how Boomtown started, in the first place, it's their annual law meeting.
But it's not, you know, people can't pay to get in and see it. I don't know if it's the place I spoke to, I don't know if they see it.
Alrighty, any other discussion? Roll call.
Elway?
Yes.
Star?
Yeah.
Star? Yes. Hesse?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yep.
Hesse?
Yeah.
I need a motion approval request from the Vinton Community Foundation for dispersment of food-
Motion?
Now we're going. Oh, expected, by Star. Star. Is it just their annual law allotment?
Yes.
Tell you what, I get to be a part of this, and I absolutely love it.
You're probably not done, probably, you have five years limit.
I'm getting darned. Yes, I am, this is my last year.
That's your last year.
I would- If there was someone else that wanted to do it, that's fine. But, do it again. This is just a fun-
Stipulation's gonna lie, you should do it again.
Remember those things we worked on back in the day?
I didn't make sure. There was a, we put a-
I think that's a good community foundation. It's alright.
Alright. I enjoyed it.
Any questions? Roll call.
Star?
Yeah.
Elway?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yep.
Hesse?
Yeah.
Hessenius?
Yep.
Star? Yes.
Alright, now it's time and place to discuss an option of J and R sanitation for picking up the residential brush.
This one was me. I asked this one to be put on here, um, Josh from J and R, I told me, I think he's our, the guy in charge of that committee, um, that a lot of people are putting their yard waste in one or the other, and so when, he doesn't really care except for the tonnage, we pay tonnage, everybody pays tonnage when it goes into their garbage container. But when it goes into their recycling container, that has to then go into the garbage. And so, um, we're just paying more for garbage. So, there is a solution to that, and I, I, I would get your guys' opinion, or anybody that wants to speak up, or anybody that's listening, chime in, um, to Chris sometime, but, what Shelsberg does, I go work over in Shelsberg quite often, and they have three dumpsters. So, the third one has a green lid on it, and that's for yard waste on it. And so they pick up, J and R will pick up, um, the opposite week of recycling, so every other week would be yard waste, the opposite, so you're always only putting up two, um, but it's kind of a, even Josh was saying it's an all or none kind of solution, so it's not just, oh yeah, I'm gonna pick up at my house, or I'm gonna pick up. It's not just, you know, a hundred people in town, but it's, everybody gets one, or nobody gets one. That also means everybody pays, or we're not doing it. So, um, price-wise, I kind of forgive. It was, it's like, it's only a certain month, so I can get more spot-on pricing if anybody's interested. I think it was like twelve dollars, um, a month added. And then, what it, that's only for the six months out of the year that we utilize it, so then you can divide it, and it makes under ten dollars a month to have a yard container.
I don't want another one.
Where's it go?
It would go out here.
To our brush dump.
Brush dump, where, you know, just, I mean, me myself, I, I throw it in my pickup, and I take it out, but not everybody has a pickup, so.
How many addresses again? Twenty-two hundred, twenty-five, twenty-two hundred, times twelve, times the, so a mere hundred sixty thousand dollars, they'll take their stuff out to the brush dump?
I'll do it.
I'd say my solution is, we send out a notice in the utility bills that yard waste in the dumpsters is not allowed, and then they need to take it out to the brush dump.
Because I feel like you're gonna end up with the opposite problem, people are gonna put garbage in there and brush, and our brush dump's gonna get filled with garbage and-
I could make more money with my UDB than all it goes.
Would it, I mean, would anybody utilize it? Anybody?
I would not, I'm sorry.
I don't think I would.
I have a truck. Kid's got a truck.
Hundred sixty thousand dollars a year, I could get that picked up every two weeks or something.
You've got a truck.
Looking into, Matt?
We're going partners.
Not at that price, no.
I'm just trying to, I want to-
Yeah, dumpster. Like, if they were gonna do something with it, like start compost or something, or like, I know I lived in Marion, they had compost piles and like that, that you could go out, like, that makes sense to me, but like, just dump it in our own brush dump. But even not at a hundred sixty grand though either, but. Yeah, that's, that's a tough question.
Is he, he the one that was complaining about it then? Brought to your attention, or?
No, no, I brought this up, I think I brought this up several months ago, um, when I was at a job, and I noticed that the yard waste container was there. And then I mentioned it, I remember calling Josh at that point and asking what it would cost. And I was kind of thinking it would be like a per household situation, like if you wanted it, because you don't own a truck, it could be fifteen bucks, but it's all or none, so I was like, oh, well, that's not, I have a feeling with everything that's going on here and all that, it would be well-received, but, that was fine. Can I ask you a question, Nate? So is the concern on it, like, our tonnage is going up due to our yard waste going in our trash, was that a concern? So therefore paying more money? It's gonna be minimal. I don't know if that, that was Josh's concern.
Okay.
Um, so it would be that's a big concern, does the cost that we're increasing out, you know, like, is it at that neutral that we're-
Well, I think what he's saying is that they're putting it in the recycling containers, you can't put that in, so that's going into our garbage, and we're paying for that part of it.
Right, yeah, so, the big thing was, I just, Shelsberg did it, everybody in Shelsberg has it, and so they must have had some sort of reason for wanting it. So I didn't know if they had the same.
I don't know what Shelsberg has for a nice brush dump. Right across the river.
I think it would be a good idea for us to encourage, J and R is supposed to be the one that educates the community, is that right? They, do we have them maybe send another education piece out?
Well-
Something, it seems like there are a lot of people who are essentially doing just that with, where they're putting their, their garbage can gets full, so they start using their recycle bin. The recycle gets dumped into garbage, and then it contaminates the entire, they get recycled, it makes the garbage, it just costs a lot more, so.
I could put it on utility bills instead of, or I could put a little word about that website.
I think that would be, that would be fantastic, even a text would be, make good use of that too probably, but, again, I thought J and R was kind of responsible for educating the public.
I would have thought people would have thought on that.
No, I'm not trying to say I haven't, I'm just, it's been a couple of years. Well, I have, uh-
Thank you for bringing the tour attention here.
Anybody ever hear about it?
With Bill.
Alright, discussion.
Cross it up here.
So, being at the end of discussion, moving on. We need to set a date for public hearing on appeal from Andrew Wire to keep the dog for July twenty-third. Your motions? Second?
Second.
First by Hesse, second by Star. What we got going on?
Uh, Andrew was here.
I saw him.
But, uh, they've got a, uh, what our, my officer is deemed as a pit bull by the appearance and characteristics, uh, which fit our ordinance, um, which, I believe Andrew's husband Sean was approached about the dog. Uh, the officer was on an unrelated call at the, the apartment address, and the officer said, hey, that's, that's a pit bull. Um, and the, uh, Sean says, it's a boxer. Do you have proof of the breed of the dog? Just ignore him, said it's, it's a boxer. Passed the officer, went to the apartment, and shut the door. Passed the officer, went to the apartment, and shut the door. Later on, apparently, uh, Andrew contacts, uh, off, my officer, and pretty much starts chastising him, and how, you know, rude, rude it was for him to, uh, um, uh, cause Sean to be in fear. And at any rate, um, we're saying it's a pit bull, uh, he's saying it's a boxer. He did go to a vet in Marion, and approached them to, um...
Can't get too carried away here, you have, it's supposed to have the hearing on it.
Well, I just explained the basics here, it's like they're allowed to hear that.
It's a pit boxer.
It's a violation of the ordinance, somebody harboring what appears to be a pit bull, and they appealed that decision to the council, so we have to have a hearing on this for July twenty-third. And at that time, all the evidence will be presented to the council, and the council will make a determination. Good job, Bob, way to stop us.
Right, thank you.
Alright, so, what's up that date? It's gonna be July twenty-third, seven P M, here at the council chambers. Roll call, please.
Asensius?
Yeah.
Elway?
Yes.
Hess?
Yeah.
Edwards?
Yep.
Barr?
Yeah.
Starr?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to records, Ted, I'm going with you first tonight, how's that?
That's, that's fine, um, nothing really to add, looking forward to the, uh, public hearing, or the appeal, uh, from, uh...
That it?
I, I had a question for Ted. Yes. I think it was for Ted. Only, um, was there a, speaking of pit bulls, uh, somebody told me there was an incident up on East Fifth and Eighth Avenue concerning a pit bull. Was there anything brought to your attention on anything about that? No, okay. Must have gone right far then, so, yeah. So, on the same subject, did, did, we were gonna decide if it's a pit bull, but, I don't, we're...
We'll, we'll have to review the evidence as it's presented to us.
They don't have a test proof.
That is not.
That's way to take that proof, and so it's not gonna be me looking at dogs saying it's a pit bull. Okay.
Better not watch any reruns of the Westminster Doctrine.
Alright, Chris, or Craig, how about we go with you next?
Starting to place some fire hydrants around town, so you'll see a few more holes, new fire hydrants in. Waiting on the upgrades to start here pretty soon, so... Did you get to talk to the homeowner or the landowner?
Partially.
Partially.
Then I got really upset, well, email I got, so I tried to cool down before I go over to anybody.
Cause if we could buy more ground, we could potentially put the compost out there.
Yeah, that's probably not gonna happen.
What's that, Richard?
No, that's not why I'm upset. Their wills are running on themselves, they don't land over all, so... Alright, Chris, you're up.
Um, I got notification from our building inspector Jerry Michael that he is going to retire in September.
In September?
Well, yeah, we gotta get him busy for the...
Oh, he busy right now.
Yeah.
So, we need to find out what we're going to do, so we don't get grandfathered into the state to have him come in and inspect all our stuff, uh... Just let him know. Is that a public works thing?
It's the... No, no.
It could be.
Well, it could go either way.
I think it's more public safety, isn't it?
Yeah, it runs on both.
We use the word public works.
I think it'd be public works.
It could be, it could be culture, recreation, health, and social...
No, building inspection falls under public safety.
Okay, public safety. Public safety. Mr. Parr, I'd like, you might wanna get your committee together and see what we're gonna do to address this situation, cause I know you've been passionate about it in the past, and long live Mr. Asensius, and I think you're both on that committee.
Besides, I told you about it first.
I heard about it long before.
Would you like to set a time to have that meeting? At this moment, so we get going?
Not Saturday morning, five o'clock.
If you'd want us all over there to have a, have input as an entire council, I would just set up a work session, we can do it that way.
Let's do it that way.
Alright. So, it sounds like we're gonna have a work session.
You wanna do it on the twenty-third?
Well, let's just wait, so... Maybe we can just get a whole bunch of things wrapped up and get that, I don't know if I wanna wait till the twenty-third. It's gonna take a while to get some stuff figured out, so... Okay, I'll take care of it.
Why don't we do it the sixteenth?
Well... Sixteen, I, I won't be able to make it sixteen.
You'll have a hard one next year.
Uh-huh. You'll have another...
I think it's the sixteenth, the, the sixteenth or the eighth, I'm not sure.
They're gonna call one of my brothers and bite out.
Oh, we can always call the seventeenth then. It's Friday.
I'll be leaving for a group.
It's all about you.
It is.
I said you can all come out.
So go ahead, let's do a council work session on the twenty-third, six P M.
I don't...
Said you wanted to be here.
I do wanna be there.
You're on vacation?
What about Monday or Tuesday next week?
Well, I could do Tuesday. We got something.
What?
Yeah, that's, just wait, I'll, I'll get a handle there, just give me a couple minutes here.
You got something, you got something there. You'll find.
Alright.
Um, that's it, that's it, because the next thing is on you, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing else?
Nothing else, I, it's on my list, but, not yesterday, I couldn't...
So, I don't report much here, so what I'm going to report tonight. So, after a long, long time, I guess.
Two and a half.
Chris and I went out and met with the Hobarts last night, five-thirty-ish. And we have come to an agreement. So, I need to set up a special council meeting for Monday night, where you pass out these D A things. Uh, we can get this resolved, I appreciate you guys reviewing, if you got any questions. Um, the group that has been part of this, who's steering this along, Chris, Pat Baird, Melissa Swan, Dennis Lazar. And, you guys all got one down there?
This is, how come you haven't seen a report from me in a few weeks?
Yeah, I don't have one.
Are you gonna give one? Didn't I put two down there?
It's forty pages.
So I wanna set that up for Monday night, at, uh, we can do it seven again, or...
Yeah, at seven.
So we need to get into and approve this, which will move it on to the next phase, which will be us taking ownership of the Braille school for approximately thirty days.
Well, first is going to be, the state has to do it.
Right, they have to do their thing.
It's really just to tell the council to, tell the board of regents to proceed. Correct, Bob? You bitter fuck. Are you ready?
I guess that's what you can say.
Yes. Because, cause once we pull the trigger...
Yeah. There's, the wheels are motioning, they're gonna go back.
See, they don't wanna do that work session that night.
Oh, actually, that's the last thing, if you guys wanted to come in early at six and do a work session.
I say, let's, you're done, man.
Alright, so let's do the work session at six to discuss the, uh, on...
Monday?
Monday.
Okay.
Monday the thirteenth, my sister's birthday, happy birthday, Leanne, coming up, so... We'll do a work session at six to discuss the inspector, and at seven, we'll do the developers' agreement, and move on.
The Hobarts have indicated they will be signing it by noon tomorrow.
Yes.
Good job, bud.
Sorry, staff. For city staff, sorry if I've seemed stressed over the past two weeks or so.
Two years.
Two years.
A lot of hard work, hasn't it, Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's all I'm gonna report.
Well, good job to all of you.
Yeah.
So... Moving on to good and welfare.
Do you have Cindy doing it?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy, I was so excited, I should've waited.
Bob.
Bob doesn't do it. Nope.
Um, I had a request about possible sidewalk along two eighteen, for people that maybe live on the west side of two eighteen, to walk to Dollar Fret or Chris's, or whatever. They don't drive, I don't know, I just said I, I don't know that we live the sidewalk along highway.
We'd be in the state right away, right, so they'd have to do it.
Yeah, they'd be doing it, it'd probably be a federal, it'd probably be some DOT, and probably from, from our state representative's office or one of the senate.
Well, we should look into it, now that we got all that retail out there, that perhaps maybe we could tie it in to get the state to pay for a walk, which is a miracle over here. Might be a not bad question to ask. Might as well ask.
They got orange belts.
Another person asked me if we could change the chicken ordinance to say no cluckers.
What?
I don't...
Aren't they all cluckers?
I don't... And then, uh...
At least the farmer's here.
Uh, Mike at the airport said, Jen, you do the city department for patching the runway. Runways been exposed in the heat.
They did a match, eh?
So, that, that was...
They did a match, eh, the runway.
That's it. Any questions for Chris, Cindy, Ted, Craig, Matt? Moving on to good and welfare. You guys can't believe how happy I'm, things gonna get signed tomorrow, so... It's not raining, right now. It's rained for four days, river's going down.
Rain really hard this year, I've been had it, that's why I was on fifteen mile an hour on thirty there.
Still a lot of exciting stuff happening in Vinton, and that's important, keep on moving, so...
Let's fix potholes.
Fix potholes.
I did have a person approach me the other night about the races going till eleven-thirty on Sunday.
I had somebody approach me as well, they texted me at eleven o'clock at night, saying, hey, they're up till eleven. So I didn't know which was worse, I mean, now hearing the racers, the guy texted me at eleven, saying, hey, the races are going on.
I, I told that person, I said, I'm guessing it probably is special. Yeah, it does not run that late.
They had a, they had a hundred and forty-seven cars.
Right.
Sunday night, and they will be moving an hour back because of the dust, that they're gonna try starting them an hour later, and hopefully the dust will not be as bad in the future. So they will be running a little later than they have been, but Sunday was a unique situation, cause we had a hundred and forty-seven cars.
Except for last week, I thought that they've been ending quite early compared to previous years, so...
Yep, we've been eight...
It was just a busy weather, starting at five o'clock now instead of six, so...
All the little American flags that got put out, that was a great gesture by those people.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
That was awesome.
Anything else? Need a motion for adjournment?
We've got it.
Motion by Hess and second by Asensius.